And recorded and would request if you have a cell phone, if you're kind enough to put it on vibrate or silent, we'd appreciate it. We always begin with the pledge of allegiance. We'd ask you remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Sanado, could you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for its stand, our nation, under God, indivisible, ever being just as for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you very much. Vanessa, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Sanado.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Robler.
Here, thank you. We always have two opportunities for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one before we adjourn. You're welcome to speak both times. One of the two times or if you just want to sit here and listen, that's also fine. We ask that your comments be related to county government matters. Under roll officer reports and comments, Mr. Prestipine is here, our controller for a bid opening, but Dave, do you have anything over and above that?
No, that's it.
Thanks, Dave. And speaking of bid openings, that takes us to under fiscal and contractual. We do have, I believe, a bid opening today for the community development block grant program specifically for Chango Township, and we welcome the township. Did you pronounce still secretary treasurer?
Manager.
Township manager. I'll have to remember that. Thank you. My apologies.
No, no problem.
Al Burick, the township manager, is with us. David, what can you tell us?
Well, we've got six bids in. Anywhere I could tell you where they're from, they're from Cronin Enterprises from Imperial PA, Friar Excavating from Beaver Falls PA, Gem Building Contractors Newcastle PA, Genco Incorporated New Wilmington PA, Mahoning Builders Newcastle PA, and Verordi Landstone Pittsburgh.
My recollection is, is this for the improvements to the park? Thank you. David, and particularly for Mr. Burick, as David knows, we generally table the bids to allow both the planning office and the controller's office consultation with the township, the opportunity to review them. And then, once you folks have done that, you're welcome to come back to us whenever you deem the appropriate time, and we can move forward if that's acceptable to every, to all three of you folks. Okay. So David will be sharing this information with you. Dan, any questions?
No.
Chris?
No.
It's nice that we got that many bids. That's a good sign, I would think.
Dan, can you say the name of the first one again?
Cronin Enterprises, C4O, NIAID.
Thank you.
Mr. Burick, any questions or comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay, sir. And Rebecca, anything else over and above we'll be talking about. Gentlemen, may I have a motion to table these bids, please?
I'll make it.
I'm sorry, has to read open the first? Oh, I'm sorry. That would help. Full disclosure, we have an 11 o'clock out of the building commitment. So my colleague said, Dan, you've got to speed it up a little bit. I was trying to.
Bye, guys.
Please, please open the bids. Please accept my apology.
Okay, the six bids we have. First one, Cronin Enterprises, $180,428.31. Friar Excavating's bid is $98,045. Gem Building Contractor, $106,463.20. Genco Incorporated, $373,67.53. Mahoning Builders, $139,440. And Verordi Landstays, $168,385.
Now that they have been opened, first I'll see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
That's my responsibility.
Mr. Kennedy. Rebecca or Mr. Burick, any questions now that the bids have been opened?
No.
Okay. Yes, sir. All, all of these are credible comments. Rebecca, have you worked with them before?
Um, all of them are pre-qualified, so in order for them to even bid, I've pre-qualified every single one of them.
So they're all legitimate?
Yes.
All of companies?
Yep.
To your knowledge.
And I've worked with three of the six of them, so.
Okay, and just, you're in some location. Such a diversity amongst all these.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Okay, thank you. Which is why this moved to table, then we'll give you folks the opportunity to review them in greater detail. Do you have any other questions? Gentlemen, may I have a motion now to table the bids?
I'll make that one.
I'll second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Robler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Rebecca and Mr. Burick, thank you both. You're welcome to stay, but if you have to move along, we understand. Likewise, Mr. Prestipine. Thank you so much. Take care. The warrant registers dated September 30 and October 3, which are provided to us by the county controller's office, are in our packet. Please take the time that you would need to look them over, and then whenever you're ready, I can take a motion to accept them.
I'll take them and I'll make a motion to accept them. I'll take them too, and I'll second that.
Thank you. Do either of you have any questions about the documents? Hearing none, then we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Robler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'll note that Mr. David Allegra from Taylor Township, he serves as one of the township supervisors who's entered the room. David, we did our first public comment, then we're going to have a public comment at the end, but did you, and I don't mean to hitch a cold with this, but do you have any public comment at this time?
No.
Oh, okay, fine. And we'll open it up again before we adjourn. Thank you for joining us. The minutes of the September 30, 2025 meeting are in our packet. I hope, gentlemen, you've had time to look them over. If you have, we can take a motion to approve them.
I made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Robler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under written communications, we have received three documents since our last meeting. The first is from Hill Corp Energy notifying us that they intend to approach the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to renew their general plan approval and operating permit, GP5, for the operation of emission sources at their central facility located in North Beaver Township. The second document comes from Frank V. Taylor Engineering on behalf of Raymond Zealust. I hope I pronounced that gentleman's name right. He resides at 221 Ligo Drive in Wilmington Township, and they are approaching the DEP for a new NPDES general permit for discharge of small flow treatment facilities. This is a single resident sewage treatment plant that will replace a malfunctioning septic system at this property in Wilmington Township. The third document is also from Taylor Engineering on behalf of Mr. Anthony Cast, who resides on Squaw Run Road in Slippery Rock Township. And again, this is to approach the DEP relative to a single residence sewage treatment plant to replace a malfunctioning septic system at the home at 22 Zero Eight Squaw Run Road in Slippery Rock Township. Gentlemen, any questions about these documents? May I have a motion for us to accept them?
I'll make that one.
I'll second. Thank you, and we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Robler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Commissioner reports and comments, I'm going to go first today. As I noted, we're speeding things up a little bit today because we have a commitment at 11 o'clock. So I'll just mention one item, and there are a lot that we can talk about maybe next week. But yesterday, Mr. Sanada and I attended the quarterly meeting of the Northwest Caucus of County Commissioners, Northwest Pennsylvania Caucus of County Commissioners. It was held in Forest County, gave us an opportunity to meet and talk with some of our fellow commissioners from this part of the state. Next, and they need quarterly, next year, probably in the summer, it'll be our turn to host. I think Indiana County and Jefferson County, I think Indiana County and Jefferson County go before we do, but I think sometime in the summer, we'll be hosting, so we'll talk about our plans for that. I'm going to forego other comments. Maybe next week we'll have more to say. Mr. Kennedy.
I'll just, I'll forego my comments this week as well, and I'll add it to it next week.
Okay. Thank you both. Under new business, we have a couple of items from our public safety department, and Chad Strobel is with us, our director of that department. Vanessa, the first resolution, what number do we give that?
316.
316, thank you kindly. Chad, good to have you. Hope you're well.
Yes, they're all, thank you.
Great to hear. The first proposal is a professional service agreement with Dell Financial Services. It's a five-year agreement totaling $207,545.60. Can you give us a little bit of information as to what is involved with this agreement?
Yes, we're currently using a system as a, we're the redundant for the courthouse for IT system. So we have, we run VMware right now. It's called courthouse also runs VMware. Dell sold that product to another company, and the company has a different path for that software. So we're going from our normal fees, I believe are right about the same, $45,000, $46,000, up to, it'll be $750,000 to keep it for another five years, $750,000, the way they're restructuring. So it's, it's going at a date. It's not that great of a system for us, so we looked at Dell, their new product, which will take us over five years to $207,000. Unfortunately, courthouse is still in their contract with the VMware. Our IT contracted crew, our guys do IT, said they will keep our VMware running, going for the next year and a half or two years until the courthouse here is ready to switch over, and then we'll be back to getting each other's redundant on the same system. So Bill and the IT office is planning on doing this same thing as soon as the contract with VMware runs out, and we'll be back together to support each other. Should anything happen here, we'll pick it up at half our place. The courthouse can pick it up. So we're just a little bit ahead on contracts, so we're going to do it a little bit sooner. But this will replace the current VMware system. It's a Dell product, and I run all part administrative computers, and they'll also back up the courthouse too when they switch over.
Do you know the precise expiration date by any chance of the current contract?
I do not. It should be, I think it was actually last month, a few months ago it expired, and we decided not to renew it because it was going to be a very large amount of money. So our DI house that works down here, Bob Randolph in his group works down here as well, is keeping that going.
I got you.
Till we get everything switched over.
You're familiar with all this?
Yes.
None of this surprises you?
No, it doesn't. I appreciate Chad and staff. It's obviously a big savings because it's a diesel one. I put the same process for 500 more thousand, whatever he's asking.
How much, how much of this cost is covered by the Commonwealth, or do we cover the entire cost?
This would, this is on us. It's separate from 911. So that would be 700-plus thousand coming out of general funds. Thirty thousand would be a burden for that.
I see.
Yeah.
Well, we know that, isn't it?
It is.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, do you have questions for Mr. Strobel? Mr. Sanada? Appreciate your effort, sure. Very, very much so. You've heard the recommendations put forward by Mr. Strobel as it relates to Resolution 316. Would one of you gentlemen wish to make a motion for its approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Robler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item, and you have been communicating with us on this matter, and we've been down this road before. This involves the issue of outdoor burning. My understanding is that you've received communications from the state forester, bureau of forestry, and there is a process, and it's spelled out in this resolution, there is a process that has to carry it out before the commissioners put implement an open burning ban. Says prior to the adoption of such a ban, the county will, shall have received a written recommendation from the district forester who has received or solicited verbal. Where the use of tobacco in any form is not covered under this act, and that campfires in campgrounds are allowed in fire rings that contain and contain the campfire, and where all flammable materials have been removed for a radius of five feet. We've done this in the past. I realize, as we speak today, it's raining, but it's not been raining quite a bit this summer. And, and, and Mr. Allegra, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I mentioned you're the Taylor Township supervisor, but you are also the fire chief, I believe, for the township of Taylor.
Yes.
And maybe that's why you're here today.
No, I just, I actually met with the forestry yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And we're still, what are we, like, two inches below normal rainfall or something in that area?
Yeah, we're in the first level of drought. We're about as moderate as dry. I'm normally dry, we're at early drought.
Right. And there's some areas that are actually critical around us. And like I told him, and he was, I was one of the ones that he called. So I would suggest that you do implement it, because if you look at the weather after today, we're only supposed to get up to maybe a half inch of rain today, and for the next like eight days, we're not going to have any precipitation again. So it's something that, you know, you're going to have to have rain three or four days in a row to try to alleviate this, but it's still dry out there.
And I would concur, and I noticed on the weather map, the rain that's coming, it seems to be more south of us.
Yes.
The heavier rain might be south of us. For the record, I know that at least two of us did receive a call from another fire chief expressing similar thoughts and concerns that you've just raised, Mr. Allegra. And so let me turn it back over to Mr. Strobel so that you can offer any more information you wish to share as to what we might do here today.
No, and I spoke with Mr. Gatsby, Chad Gatsby from DCNR. He gave me some numbers about how dry it is. Brought it up to this, makes too much sense. I didn't go into the wildland fire fund, of course, as he went through, but I guess the state went to its planning level two for, or preparedness level two for wildfires, which is elevated, they have more people ready because of the conditions currently, the way they are, is very likely to have a fire. You're out of control if there is a fire that starts. But one, you know, burn index is nearly 20, which is high. One-hour fuel moisture is under 10%. Hundred-hour fuel moisture is near 15%. Thousand hours are under 20%. So that's, you know, how much moisture it's going to take, how it's going to completely deplete, any moisture that's left over if there is a fire. So the conditions are, you know, very good for the spread of fires currently. This rain, I checked this morning, we're expecting, as Supervisor Allegra said, Chief Allegra said, not too much, maybe, you know, some are calling for an inch over the next, you know, day and a half or so, some are under three quarters inch or so. But we're not expecting much rain over the next, you know, few days, or the next couple weeks, I should say, as far out as I can see. So the conditions are right. Thankfully, we have not had many fires. I sent DI information down to you guys, just the total number of fires that we've had, types of fires, a lot of them have been, that thankfully worked out to be nothing. But the conditions are right. If one does get going, it could really spread fast and get out there. So, I mean, according to all the data from the state and the weather conditions and everything, this is a good decision to have a burn ban put in place. Again, you all, the commissioners, have the right to rescind that if any kind of conditions change. It expires automatically after 30 days unless extended. But last year, when we did this, I think it was two weeks, we started getting quite a bit of rain. I told you guys, I was at another conference and said, yeah, we can get rid of this thing. We did, so.
The inconvenience of a burn ban, we have to weigh that against risk of not implementing a ban. The risk is not only to the property owners, but we can't lose sight of the fact that the risk is also to the firefighters as well. And we're not in the business of putting people at risk. So based upon the information you've shared with us, and Debbie, when I give you the packet, it's very detailed, what you'll see here as it relates to the process, and then, of course, Mr. Strobel will be happy to answer any questions you might have. But with that all being said, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy for his questions.
I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanada.
I'm fine as well. I think that we did this last year, and you said it within two weeks, and hopefully, you know, things will change. My conversations too with the chiefs, if I contacted me, you know, I welcome Commissioner Robler, who said safety is the most important thing, especially, you know, we're short of a lot of volunteer fire departments right now, and want to make sure that we minimize anything, just like we're one fire away. That's been the point of me, and I agree with them, one fire away, disaster, what's going to happen? Fortune so far, you know, it takes one. Chad, hopefully, the last ban will not last a month, but, you know, that's up to the people involved when we can do anything.
Thank you. Chris, anything else?
No, no, I appreciate you hearing out. Like you said, there's a process, DCNR started that process, and I'm asking you, you know.
We're following the prescribed process, correct? Mr. Allegra, I'm glad you came today, because we appreciate, from your position of expertise, we appreciate your input as well, so thank you. Gentlemen, this is Resolution 317. If there are no other concerns, I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
I'll make that one.
I'll second. Thank you very much. We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Robler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Chad, thank you for your time and all the effort that you've put into this. We'll sit tight till we hear back from you. How's that sound?
Yeah, I'll be still keeping in contact with DCNR, keeping track of the weather and reaching out to everybody, and hopefully.
Thank you. By the way, it reminded me, and you pointed out to us, there are a number of counties throughout the Commonwealth that have already implemented bans within their towns. We're not the first one to do.
No, as of right now, there are six, Clearfield, what happened that year? Six of them, Cross, Cameron, Clearfield, Elk, Jefferson, Huntington, and Somerset.
And I believe in eastern Ohio, there have been some bans.
Eastern, or Ohio has annual bans. There are certain months, I believe it's like October through the end of November, and then March into, end of April, that they have burn regulations in effect.
I see.
But I don't know if they're total bans, but for larger fires, they just, they preemptively do them, obviously, to their different governments, right? Yeah, they have preemptively done, so every year, spring and fall, they have a build-in that they automatically take place. You have to get waivers to have fires and stuff.
Thank you for noting that as well. Well, we appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much, Chad.
All right, bro.
You too.
Thank you.
Resolution 318 involves a agreement we have with PNDOT as it relates to county-owned bridge inspections. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, PNDOT approached us on this and requested that we adopt this resolution pertaining to the agreement that we have with them. And you might have a little more detail than I do. I just have the resolution, but you have something over and above that.
No, I, I just wanted you to update the resolution, Chris, if you agree.
Correct if I'm wrong, I believe Mr. Attorney Madora looked at all of this, too, didn't he? Okay. Chris, questions on this, on this matter? Dan, comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Resolution 318, and you're comfortable.
Yes.
And I believe Jason was as well. May I have a motion for 318? I hope we accept 318.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Robler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Number 319, as we've had numerous discussions at meetings for the last number of months, we've been giving consideration as to what direction we want to go as it relates to the future of the older section of the former church across the street. As you know, the newer section is houses. We've also had conversations about the future of the Almira building. And accordingly, we've, we've done some due diligence, and I have to credit particularly Commissioner Kennedy. We've all been involved in some of the conversations, but in terms of a lot of the legwork, Mr. Kennedy has taken it upon himself to spend a good deal of time on this. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Kennedy. We have a resolution that will allow us to take a step forward in this process, but Dan, would you be willing to talk a little further about it?
Yeah, we've been looking for probably over a year now, what we can do with CYS, because a lot of ground in the building, which is a building that's, it's been helping aged and it's more up to it. So we were looking, and we looked all over, and I, you know, the three of us, Joe, I'll put some stipulation to what we have to look for. Running a couple of buildings out there, we have to find, they'll be part of this with us on this, paying us rent for that, along with CYS rent. We can put CYS in the school, and we're running out of space here for people. We need to move some people out here, so we can put some more people out there and make the second campus, so, when it's counted, et cetera. Make the work, and use the buildings for what we need to use for. Road services needs placed up with the road. I've been looking together, we looked at this probably, I don't know, four or five times, and I'll be up there tomorrow to look at it again. Come up with this agreement to let them, and to purchase it, and we'll see if the capital agencies in this place agree to it. If they do, we'll go ahead and make some people. Then we'll give you some more on next hour, we can talk about it. 600,000 dollars.
And that's listed in the resolution.
And we're working to do something with Almira, we'll help us out on this.
How are you going to finance it?
Find what?
How are you going to finance it?
Joe, you want to do that one for me? Because we should. We would purchase it out of our capital, we would be financing it more than likely, and that, that would come down after the agreement with commissioners, make a decision that we have the capital to be able to purchase it, any renovation. decision that we have the capital to be able to purchase it, any renovations and changes. We would then probably look at a one-time structure. So more than likely to be paid via the, the funding streams of the different people who would do it beyond that. Not necessarily general fund.
This resolution today would simply authorize that a letter of intent be drawn up and submitted to the diocese, which would offer the diocese six hundred thousand dollars to purchase the property at 1111 South Cascade Street, which is the St. Joseph Worker Church and campus. We would then need to wait for their response to occur. So this is the first step of probably many steps beyond this. Also, in that letter of intent, conversations particularly that Mr. Kennedy has had, the diocese does run a food bank at that location. And part of this would be that we would allow for the continuation of that food bank program for at least eighteen months. And if we get to that point and they still need it, we'd be happy to entertain a conversation with them to that effect. This has all been looked at by our solicitor. And I, I will note too, that the property is within the boundaries of the city of Newcastle. It's fairly close to the Shenango Township line. This is, Newcastle is the county seat, and this property is within the boundaries of the city of Newcastle. Dan, before I turn it over to Chris, do you have anything else to honor this? Mr. Sanada comments?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, since we've been here the last year and a half, we've tried to do due diligence. And we first got here, Commissioner Kennedy, that is an old agency, offices, we went to CYS, we went to different agencies. We're running out of space. And recycling, it's the situation of recycling, you know, we need facility for that as well. We, our home was to keep it in the city of Newcastle. Anything which we would do, chairman of the government, especially that was the first thing we thought was, start looking around at the facilities. And we looked, we looked at the wall, we looked at Rose Estates, we looked at Talbotan Building, anything that was available within Newcastle, really, you know, kept that open wide. This opportunity came up. And I think it's an opportunity, it's very positive for the neighborhood out there as well, because the worst thing could have happened is a building deteriorating and reaches a point where it becomes a disaster. So, I mean, business stuff, something just came up, you know, looking for a year plus or half of it. Since we first got here, we need space badly. And, you know, we talked about the voting issues. We need like, we don't want to pay rent. I mean, that's what we don't want to pay rent. We want, so it's going to save money in the long run. And with the NASCO and your efforts, Joe, hopefully we get, if it's done, away, it'll probably save us money in the long run. And that's, that's the ultimate goal. That's just pretty much my call.
Thank you very much. This, again, is, is the first step in this process in terms of a formal letter of intent. As far as the future of the former church across the street, we have not addressed that yet. That will come later. We're, we're focusing right now on this particular piece of property, and we're hopeful that we can reach an accord with the diocese and focus on that for now. And then, at the appropriate time, we will then pay attention to what future may hold for the church, the former church across the street. Again, thanks, Chris. Before I take a motion, once again, Dan, anything else from your party? Debbie, other questions that you might have?
How long has it been empty?
Well, you might remember.
About eighteen months. Yeah, I was going to say two years, maybe.
Two years?
Yeah, that's just a, my, my.
How big is it?
It's about fourteen acres.
Is it fourteen acre?
Yeah.
About fourteen acres. So we have land.
That's very small, eighteen acres. Is it the church and educational building?
Yes, all. It's a four hundred acres.
The whole campus.
Thank you, Debbie. Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution 319?
I'll make that one.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. If there are no other concerns or comments, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 320 is a budget amendment that relates to the community development block grant specifically for Shenango Township. And we're taking unbudgeted revenue of a hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars from the CBBG revenue account. And we're applying that amount to the Shenango Park Community Development Block Grant Fund account. Would I, would I, could I have a motion for this resolution?
I'd make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 321 is a transfer in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars coming from the capital expenditures contingency line item, and we're applying that to the capital sheriff's vehicle line item. This is Resolution 321. Would one of you wish to make a motion?
I'll make that one.
I'll second. Thank you. And I apologize. Any questions? I, I should have asked a question. Forgive me for that. Hearing, hearing no questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a few transfers that, and I'm going to go through them stately if you need to ask. And then when we get to the end, we can either take one motion or we can split them up. Under the commissioners, under the opioid allocations, we're taking five hundred thousand dollars from the opioid contingency. And make it clear, those aren't tax dollars. Those are dollars that we received from the various lawsuits that have led to the distribution of these dollars. Line item into miscellaneous allocations. The domestic relations office is asking for a four hundred and fifty dollar transfer from their materials and supply line item into that of their uniform line item. District Judge Cartwright in Elwood City is asking for a three hundred dollar transfer from his contingency into equipment lease. The information technology department is requesting a four, excuse me, a fourteen hundred dollar transfer from their contingency into their telephone and internet line item. Central court is requesting a twenty-five hundred dollar transfer, all of it coming from their contingency into two thousand of it's going into their materials and supplies, five hundred of it is going into their staple line item. And then finally, the tax claim office is asking for a four hundred dollar transfer from their contracted consultation line item into that of maintenance and repairs. Look like they had a, an issue with their copier that they have to address. Okay. That's again four hundred dollars. Chris, any questions on any of these requests? Mr. Kennedy, would one of you wish to make a motion to approve all of those requests?
I'd make a motion to approve all of them.
I'll second.
Thank you. Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. A few announcements. Our next commissioners' meeting will be a week from today, Tuesday, October 14, 10:00 AM. And this room opened to the public. The Lawrence County Planning Commission will hold its monthly public meeting tomorrow, October 8. It will be held at the, at noon at the Plain Grove Township Municipal Building, 1029 Plain Grove Road, uh, Plain Grove Road in Plain Grove Township. The prison board will meet on Wednesday, October 15, at noon for its regular monthly meeting. Anything over and above that, Mr. Sanada?
That was quite a busy monthly meeting.
Thank you, sir. And we'll announce that the courthouse will be closed this coming Monday. It's a federal holiday, October 13, 2025, in observance of Columbus. That takes us to public comment. And I'll open the floor. We have two folks in the room. And ladies first, anything, Debbie?
Actually, just a quick question. So there's four buildings out there. What are they?
There's a church building.
Yeah.
There's a school. There's a apartment building with the nuns living.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a house.
It's not like a shed or a garage.
There's, there's another little shed out there, too.
We're, we're going to work very closely with the solicitor in terms of the next steps, in terms of if we reach an accord with the diocese, then we've got to go through the process of securing the appropriate professional services that we're going to need to assist us with potential renovations, et cetera. The solicitor will guide us as to how we go about securing those services. We'll stay, stay very close to Mr. Madore in terms of how we go about that. Anything else, Debbie?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have your packet. Mr. Allegra?
No, I'm good.
We, we're so glad you came here today. Again, your, your input is very helpful. We appreciate it. Hope things are well down in Taylor Township.
Oh, yeah.
That's good. We, last week, we took a moment of silence for Mr. Senchak passing Mr. Senchak's.
Yeah.
Did the supervisors appoint the tax collector, do you know?
Well, right now, what we're going to do, he has an assistant, so she's handling it now till the end of the election.
I see.
So.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that.
Because elections, what, November 5th?
Yeah, less than, less than a month.
Then depending what happens there, we'll see where we go from there.
Understood. Thank you. Again, you're always welcome here. Closing comments. Mr. Sanada? Thank you. Mr. Kennedy? Again, we went a little faster than usual because we do have to stop down, so forgive us for the speed at which we went today. Joe or Vanessa, anything we've missed?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you all so much. There being no other business to be brought before the board, may I please have an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those, if they would please say aye aye for the same sign. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
That's good. You should do that every week.
What's that?
Hurry it up.
Yeah. Oh, he tells me that all the time.